Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for April 26, 2023 to order. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Aegis?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is a roll call of council members. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith?
Here.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Holst?
Oh, excuse this evening, sorry.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
All right. Item two is our community comments. The first is a review of emails from the public. I'll ask Peter Donovan if there is any emails received.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Council. Yes, there were two emails sent to Council in the last couple of weeks. The first email was sent Friday, April 14th, and it is from Scott Correa. And Scott writes to the Council, greetings. Forgive the delicate subject matter, but we have a problem with unhoused people relieving themselves in public. I would suggest that we locate some porta potties, or whatever you choose to call them, in areas where the unhoused congregate. Yes, I completely understand. We have invested in restrooms around the city, but those don't seem to be located close enough to the target users to be useful. Yes, it is the wrong message. Yes, we shouldn't need to do it, but perhaps it's time to move forward, to move towards a potential solution to some people's needs, even if it is an incomplete and inadequate step sideways. I completely understand that this could fail miserably and that it may be a futile gesture, but we will never know unless we give it a chance. I believe we should at least try this for a while and see if it reduces the problem. The city has spent far more money on far less practical things, and it might just work well enough to make a difference. Our city's mission statement says, "We provide professional, efficient services to create a lifetime positive difference for our community." I suggest that providing porta potties as a service to the unhoused of our community lines up exactly with the intent of our vision statement. I respectfully ask the Council to fund a trial installation of porta potties and see if it makes a difference. Thank you for your time. Scott Correa. Council, your second email was a, was a long one. It was a request to read what I believe is a legal document, lawsuit. So I am going to read as much of this as time permits. And when I talk about time permitting, I'm referring to the five-minute limit that's in accordance with Mount Vernon Municipal Code. So I am turning on a timer here, and I will stop reading when we hit five minutes. For the public, and Council, you have this in your possession, of course, for the public, a copy of this entire document would be available by request from the, from the city clerk. The email cover says, "My name is Darrell Fusell. I am requesting that the attached documents be added to the upcoming Skagit, upcoming council meeting for public comment." And this was sent Sunday, April 23rd, and it says Darrell, Darrell describes himself as a Skagit resident. Notice of misappropriation or falsification of accounts by public officers. 23rd April 2023, City of Mount Vernon. Council members jointly and severely, I am contacting you in accordance with 18 U.S. Code Subsection 4, misprision of felony, and request that you, as a civil authority, use your powers to confront felony acts occurring in Skagit County, Washington. This notice and request is supported by the following. Number one, on March 7th, 2023, Skagit County officials began being served complaints filed in the U.S. District Court, Western District of Washington, for crimes against the plaintiffs, including A) not being in office legally, bond violations, constitutional violations, election crimes, civil rights violations, obstruction of justice, and racketeering. B) County officials named in the complaints include Don McDermott, Rich Wirick, Sandra Perkins, Ron Wiesen, Peter Browning, Eric Peterson, Melinda Miller. On April 17th, 2023, over one month after legal services had begun being provided by county employees, the Skagit County Legislative Body that included five of the defendants approved using county funding to provide legal services to the defendants themselves, even though state and county law strictly prohibits the use of public resources for personal gain. Violations committed include A) RCW 42.20.060 falsely auditing and paying claims. B) RCW 42.20.070 misappropriation and falsification of accounts by public office. C) Skagit County Code 2.20 individual liability of county officers. Legal services will not be provided to officers, employees, or volunteers of the county to defend a charge of official misconduct, willful misconduct, or to defend the right to hold office. Three, attached you will find the following supporting documents regarding the allegations being provided to you that include A) April 17th, 2023, signed Skagit County Legislative Body Legal Services Approval. B) April 13th, 2023, Plaintiff Emergency Motion. C) April 2nd, 2023, Plaintiff Original Complaint. D) RCW 4.20.060. Skagit County Code 2.20. On behalf of all Skagit County residents who do not approve of this misuse of our tax funds, I request you use your civil authority as a local official to confront the violations being reported to you. The below-Skagit County residents request this letter and all attached documents to be provided as public comment at the upcoming council meeting. Cody Hart. Darrell Fusell. Kevin Ewing. Timothy Garrison. Stephen Rindall. Kathy LaFrenier. Providing a defense to Skagit County officers, officials, and employees in multiple lawsuits, whereas multiple civil lawsuits have been filed recently in United States District Court. And again, the full copy of this document is available by request to the city clerk. And that's all the comments.
Okay, thank you. I think I, I feel compelled to make a comment that the City of Mount Vernon is a municipal corporation. There is absolutely no legal authority to enforce the United States Code or to enforce Skagit County Code. For the public to know that, it's important. All right, community comments, public comments is the folks that may be here. And so if there's anyone that would like to speak, you're welcome to come up to the podium at this time. Anyone for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. Our consent agenda, excuse me, is consists of three items, item A, B, and C. This is council meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, and claims.
I'll move for approval of our consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, under reports tonight, we have committee reports. The first up is Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee. That's Councilmember Mary Hudson. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting was held at 6:00 PM in this chamber. We had, the first item up is approval of our meeting minutes from March 22nd. Then we rolled right into our, the meat of the matter. First up was Jennifer Burner, our Parks and Enrichment Services Director. Just a couple of the things that she talked to us about. Hillcrest Lodge is going, undergoing some improvements. The restoration work on the outside structure has started. New sound system will be added in May. Hooray! And staff is researching offers, offers, or options, I'm sorry, for new windows, doors, and improved lighting. So that's all exciting news for the citizens and everybody who's been in and used the Hillcrest Park Lodge. Did you know that next year is the 100-year anniversary of Hillcrest Park? It is the first park in the City of Mount Vernon, I believe, in 1933 or '04, I believe. We, thank you. Thank you. Our staff is seeking community members who'd like to sit on a committee to help plan the 100-year celebration and asking anyone who has a special memory that they'd like to share about Hillcrest Park, like it had a petting zoo, or anyone who knows any history of the park to contact the office. Spring and summer programs and events. Our spring and some, our spring and programs are meeting with a lot of success. Youth dance classes continue to be popular, and this spring we will host a dance recital. The adult art classes are very popular. We have a youth baseball program called Big Hitters and had a record number so far of 187 participants. Registration for the summer programs has started with a variety of free and fee-based programs. There's sport camps, nature camps, supervised playground and rec-to-go programs, which we came back from last year. They were hugely popular, so we're happy to bring those back this year. Family fun nights are returning to Edgewater Park. The Fourth of July event will be at Edgewater Park, and the 37th Annual Youth Arts Festival will be at Hillcrest Park in August, so we're excited about that. There's a new program out called Explore Outdoors. It's a $10, for $10, you get a backpack, and it has everything for a young naturalist to enjoy and do projects and programs and every kind of fun, catch bugs, the whole nine yards. You can go to the city website, check out the Parks and Rec page. And I think they said they have about 10 left right now. We've already sold, I believe, 40. So that sounds like it's going to be a really popular and fun program for kids to get involved in. Some park projects to update on. It's the 25, 25th Street Park Phase 2 is in process, and with the help from one of our leaderships, Skagit Teams and the Mount Vernon Kiwanis Club. Donations have been also, have been given from Lowe's and Urban Forest Nursery for some planting materials. So if you have a chance, you might want to stop by. There's a drive-by. There's a nice new fence. It's really a nice park, so we're really excited about that. Edgewater and Lions Parks Restrooms have been repainted and deep cleaned. All, and all-in, in-house playground audit has been completed, and this time of year, our staff is spending a lot of time preparing baseball fields, mowing all the turf areas, planter bed maintenance, and pressure washing, a variety of services. After that, we had a discussion with Director Doug Valesky, our Finance Director. We had a budget amendment that he's proposing, which includes the purchase of a commercial rear-load garbage truck and down payment for a residential automated garbage truck for the solid waste utility. Both of these items are in the, in, we call the ERNR, or Equipment Reemplacement, Replacement and Reserve Schedule, and will be included in the ERNR budget for 2023. We were going to talk a little bit about the gambling tax income, but that was requested by Councilmember Holst, who is unfortunately not with us this evening, so we decided to hold that until our next finance meeting, so he can hear about that. The next item we talked about was the Mount Vernon Library Commons, and that was Mayor Boudreau and Doug Valesky kind of tag teamed on this. An update was given on the overall committed funding for the Mount Vernon Library Commons project. Currently, the project is short by about 2.8 million, which is better than it was at 6 million, so we're very excited about that. So due to an award from the state capital grant of 2.1 million, we're very thankful for that. It was awarded just during this last legislative session, and an additional $400,000 was realized from the Mount Vernon Library Foundation, a contribution there. So that's really exciting. A review of the still potential funding opportunities was discussed in the amount of over 22.2, which we hope we will get most of, or not if all of. So that, it's a amount made of grants that have been applied for, possible federal appropriated grants and additional contributions. If, if we were to get all that money, the project would be overfunded by over 19 million, which would allow us to offset any project debt and debt to the city. As of this date, 10.2 million of payments have been made for this $53.4 million project. We then adjourned our meeting at 5:00 to 7:00, and we will come back after our council meeting tonight to continue our, our budget committees, or our finance committee meeting. We adjourned at 6:55.
All right, thank you so much. Next up is our Development Services Committee Report, and it's Councilmember Melissa Beaton.
Thank you, Mayor. So we, Development Services Committee meeting was held in here last Wednesday on the 19th. We got an early start at 5:00 PM so that we could have an informational set, session with the Washington State Department of Transportation to hear about their I-5 corridor study, their master plan and vision for the statewide corridor, and then council was afforded an opportunity to ask some questions. After that, we rolled into our 2023 Comp Plan docket timing, and Director Growth briefly reviewed the items on our work plan along with some expected timelines. The topics that are included in our work plan include design standards, sign code update, a review of non-conforming structures, home occupation, and land clearing, just to name a few. Staff will review and shift the prioritization of those, of that work as the year plays out. There was a commercial land study previously on our work plan, and we've, we're holding that back just a little bit to line up more next year with our, as we begin our Comp Plan discussions. Then Director Growth discussed the requirement for local governments to have a process for identifying essential public facilities and the benefits to the city if a list is established. So a proposed list will be presented at a later date. Then we received an update on potential property donation, and after further discussion, council instructed staff to decline the donation. And then I made a suggestion that the county, or that the county, the city consider creating a land donation policy because we're getting a few more of those, and it would be good just to have a framework when we receive those. Then we heard about some updates, project updates around town. There's a couple on College Way and Riverside Drive. There's an RV park that's going to start really moving some groundwork here real soon, if it hasn't happened already. And then an update on a project in, on First Street. And then Mayor Boudreau discussed the Department of Ecology's Affordable Housing Cleanup Grants, otherwise known as a Brown, Brownfield Grant, and she highlighted some potential sites for illustration of use of the Department of Ecology's program. The mayor then discussed a comp planning in conjunction with the Growth Management Act. The city's current and future efforts include transportation investments, hotel and waterfront development, a hotel feasibility study, and a mixed-use commercial analysis. Also, we talked about potential multifamily development sites. Then, under Miscellaneous for the Good of the Order, Councilmember Hudson received an email from a resident regarding mandatory trash collection. Trash and organics collection and regulations were discussed, and we're going to, still talking about that a little bit. And then Councilmember Holst suggested scheduling a council retreat. And then council discussed an email we received regarding the placement of porta potties around the city. And then Mayor Boudreau provided an update on the Library Commons funding. And with that, the meeting adjourned at 7:45.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on, under reports, item B is Councilmember Comments. Any Councilmember comments this evening? Moving on. Item C is Mayor's Report. So a few great things to share tonight. Martha's Place Ribbon Cutting took place this morning at 10:00 AM. This is Catholic Housing Services of Western Washington, the City of Mount Vernon and Skagit County. We're just excited to participate in that. The address is 1925 East College Way. And if you don't, if you've driven on College Way, you will know what this project is. It's a three-story blue building that looks like an apartment building, because it is. Martha's Place is the first permanent-supported housing pro, development in Skagit County. This project provides 70 units of low-barrier housing to people experiencing chronic homelessness and low-income households at risk of homelessness. Catholic Community Services, as part of this model, provides 24/7 supportive services in the building to help those folks be able to maintain successful housing, find belonging, and build stable lives. Martha's Place serves as a safe haven and provide a strong support network to help ensure residents have long-term success, a vision that the city has worked with partners towards since 2016. Past council adopted an overlay zone allowing for this use to be located in a significant portion of the city. Since then, the state has preempted the zoning, allowing for the use in really any parts of zoning of cities, but at the time, it was a significant achievement. So I want to thank the council members that were on, on council at that time, including Councilmember Joe Linquist, who's in the audience tonight. The council seated before you tonight has been fully supportive of Martha's Place and operational funding, allocating some specific sales tax revenues that can be used for this use to the project to support operations and the success of folks that will live there. The cities of Burlington also committed funding to help with operations of that, as well as Skagit County, and that's important to note. Also want to work with our state legislature for very significant and sustainable operational funding for projects like this moving forward. So anyway, wanted to share that. This project is over 23 million, I'm going to get this wrong, over $20 million. I know that for sure. And just wanted to celebrate that with the community today and have 70 units of housing come online, so thrilled with that. Thank you to Councilmembers Brocksmith, Correia, and Beaton, who were able to make it this morning to celebrate with us. Next up, the Commons Construction Update. A few things here. The construction of the sheer walls continues, the footings and the cast-in-place columns that you see in elevator pits, which you don't see because they're underground. The utilities, the plumbing mechanical are all finishing up, and the underslab insulation. So there's all this underground insulation before they put the at-grade slab on, that's occurring now. And the install, the slab on grade, that's where you actually have concrete at the grade level to start going vertical on the building. That's going to occur in the next two weeks, so we're excited about that. The picture that's shown next is one of the sheer walls. This is in the central part of the library in the large opening. What will occur on the side of the building is going to be all of our library stacks. And the other side of it, as you look through, is the staff area, and then a corridor will parallel it going east from that particular site. I know it was really hard to understand by looking at that picture, but it's all part of the interior of the building, so we're excited about that. And that concludes the Mayor's Report, so. All right. And item D is Committee Agenda Requests. Any Committee Agenda Requests from Council? All right. Moving on, there is no unfinished business. Under New Business Tonight, item A. This is a Skagit PUD update. Our General Manager of the Public Utility District, is that's what PUD means, our water service, is George Sidhu, and he's here to update the council and the community on projects and plans. Welcome, George.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. I am here to provide an update on the PUD's plans and projects and different events. I try and come once a year to give everybody an update, and I make my way around to the different city councils, so this is always a fun event on my calendar, so. That, I'll get right into it. The mayor mentioned previous commissioner. He's our commissioner now, but he used to be a council member, Joe Linquist. He's here with us today. But our, our board has a slightly different makeup than when I was here last year. With the election last year, our District 3 Commissioner changed over, and Corinne Hamburg is our Commissioner now. She started January 1st of this year. So that is the makeup of our board as of today. And let's see. As I give these updates, I always try to keep the focus on our strategic plan. We did that, an update of our strategic plan last fall. And so we are now in the first year of our second-ever strategic plan, and it's, it's been a great process for us. It keeps, keeps us aligned as far as budget and projects. Keeps us focused on our priorities. I know everybody else does strategic plans, but it was new for us recently, and it's been very helpful, and we try and keep a focus on that. So things in our strategic plan. This is one thing that's in our plan, but also it's something we've been doing for a little while with the City of Mount Vernon. We have a, a maintenance agreement for fire hydrants in the city. We started that in 2020. And so we are now three years into it. And this, these are just some statistics on what we do, but the, the goal is to maintain every hydrant every five years. So we do roughly 20% of them each year. And what we do is, in the spring, is when we go and do all of our maintenance on that 20%, so that in the summer, we can go back and paint them. So very shortly, you'll have, you know, everything would have been gone through once, and the goal is to make sure that they flow when the fire hydrants pull up to the hydrant and need water. And if there's ever any issues with those, we take care of them. So this program has been going really well, and we transmit all the information that we have to your fire department so they have access to the information regarding the hydrant, the location, the last time it was maintained, and if there's any issues with it that needed to be addressed. So the information is available to everybody. We have a similar agreement with the City of Cedar Awolli as well, that we just started this year. So we're trying to work our way around to the different jurisdictions in the county. You guys were talking about budget earlier, and so this is a slide that I like to present to the, as I go around and do this roadshow. This is our capital budget, and we are really heavy into our capital program right now. This is a kind of a snapshot of a 10-year CIP that we did back in 2018, but it shows currently this three-to-four-year span where we are doing a lot of capital work. So overall, this was about $155 million in 10 years, but we're in the middle of doing almost $90 million in capital improvements in three years. Last year, we just about hit $30 million. We're hoping to get over $35 million this year, and then we drop off next year. We've got a couple of big projects. One is our transmission line, which I'll, I'll touch on here in a second. Another one is our new administration building, which I'll also touch on in a little bit. But we're under a, a infrastructure replacement cycle right now, and so we're trying to, trying to get all these projects done. Some of them were deferred from previous years, and some of them are just anticipated new construction, but we are spending a lot of money on capital projects right now. And this slide kind of puts that into perspective about where, where the money comes from. And so this is an average customer bill, and remember that your bill comes every two months. And it's roughly about $135 every two months. Our average customer bill is about that much. And based on our spending right now, about half of that goes towards our major capital program. So that's, we also took out some bonds and some debt. We didn't want to burden the ratepayers with all of the, the cost of the projects, but we are funding it heavily with our rates. And so there's, you know, the other slices of the pie you can see there. We have still an ongoing pipe replacement program. Obviously, we have operational costs, and then debt service we have to pay for as well. But, you know, for, for our customers, it's important to know that just about half your bill is going towards that major capital construction. All right, talk about a few projects here, and as I go through them, if you have questions, feel free to just interrupt and, and ask. So I mentioned this earlier, transmission line. Slight recap, so this is just over five-mile pipeline replacement going from the City of Mount Vernon down in the bottom-left corner of this image up to Judy Reservoir in the top-right. So this is a replacement of- So this is a replacement of our existing transmission line. So the existing transmission line is about 55 years old. It was built, it was concrete cylinder pipe, it is concrete cylinder pipe, and it's 24-inch diameter. We had some issues with that. It's outlived its useful service life. We've had leaks and breaks on that, and it's obviously a very important piece of our infrastructure. So we started a replacement project, which is now going to be 36-inch diameter instead of 24, and it's going to be welded steel pipe instead of concrete cylinder. So it's going to be much more resilient in an earthquake, and it's going to have a longer use, service life as well. So we started this project last year. We're just about done. We've got a couple of pieces left that are keeping this from being completed. About half of this pipe, probably from Judy Reservoir down to about Beaver Lake Road, is actually in service right now. So we have valves periodically down the pipeline, and so there's a part of the pipeline, the upper part, that was giving us more trouble, so we made sure that we finished that first, isolated it from the part that we're still working on, and then we placed that new pipe into service. And so it's been in service for almost about a year now, I think about nine months. The pieces that we have left, there, as we parallel Highway Nine, oh, the mouse doesn't show up, okay. So this stretch right along here, parallels Highway Nine, and that's part of a joint project that we have with Skagit County. So we are, the county is coming in after us and surfacing the Centennial Trail. So we're in the old railroad grade, we're building our pipe in the railroad grade. We finished most of that except for a small piece where we cross part of the Nooka Champs Creek. And so because that's going to be a pedestrian trail when we're done, we're putting in a pedestrian bridge, a steel bridge. And so that's being fabricated right now, and it'll be installed sometime in May. So that's a link of this that isn't put in because the pipe is going to be built, you know, right underneath that bridge. So that piece of pipe and that bridge is still, still remains to be installed. So that part is still missing. And then the second part that's missing is this horizontal directional drill. And probably all see the pipe that's sitting over there on the east end of College Way. It's been there for a while. So this is a 2,000-foot drill under the Nooka Champs wetlands. Rather than open-cutting it and trenching through the wetlands, we were drilling underneath it. 2,000 feet, the pipe again is 36-inch diameter steel, and these are pictures from when they were preparing it last year. And so you can see all the welding and everything that was done, and the pipe is staged over there. It was about a year ago that the contractor first drilled the hole underneath the wetlands. Then they went to pull the pipe into the hole, and it didn't make it, got stuck, so they had to pull it out, and some of the pipe got damaged. A lot of it, we were able to salvage. So they quickly got to welding up that 2,000 feet again. So that pipe's been sitting there for a while, just because we know that we're going to get to drilling again, and so we ordered pipe, got it all welded up, and it's been sitting there waiting for the other part of the project to be completed. So going back and forth with the contractor took a while. We haven't exactly resolved why the pipe got stuck. That will come. The important factor for us right now is we want to get the pipe installed. So the drilling contractor is on site right now, and we hope to start re-drilling next week. So it's going to take about a month for that whole process to go through if it all goes well, so by June, we should have that pipe under the wetlands, and you won't see it there anymore, hopefully, not going to win. Are there any questions about that? You know, it's a pretty prominent thing to see that pipe sitting there. It's been sitting there for so long, and a lot of people have questions about it. But the pipe will, that pipe that's sitting there is going to be underground. We will trench the, that, a new pipe along that same alignment, but the finished product is you won't see a pipe. It's all going to be buried, and so I think a lot of people think that that pipe's just going to be in service above ground, but it's not.
Quick question that I have on the pipe.
Yeah.
Thanks. Fascinating work, but it sounds like the pipe got damaged, that got fixed, but is the plan now for the hole itself to get widened, or are cameras going in there, or?
That's a really good question.
Yeah.
We, so that was one of the first options, was to make the hole bigger. You know, you think if something gets stuck, if you just make it bigger, it might make its way through, but we did do a survey of the hole, and it didn't really indicate to us that a bigger hole would allow it to go through smoother. What we saw was that it wasn't a smooth hole. You know, that welded steel pipe is, it's got a pretty thick wall, and it's got a certain bending radius, and so it has to, it can bend, but it has to be a smooth bend, and it can't be too sharp. And what we saw was that there was a kind of a kink in that hole, and a steel pipe can't make a jog like that. So that was discussed. We weren't convinced that a bigger hole would solve that problem. What we're doing now is drilling a completely new hole, and it's going to be shallower, and it should make this go a little bit easier. With the first drill, we gathered a lot of information on what was underground. You can do test holes and drilling as much as you want, but you really don't know what's underground until you go and drill a hole. But we're going to make it shallower, and it should make the process easier, and we shouldn't hit things that are unknown to us.
And there's a new hole next to it?
It's, yeah, not far away. I think it's within 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Good question. We have, we always needed two holes under that wetlands. One is going to be for the water pipe, but one is going to be for fiber optic conduit. Just so happens now, we've got a really large hole for the fiber optic conduit. That's all right.
There you go.
This is a $40 million project, and which is one of the reasons why our capital program was, has been really high the last few years. Going on to one of our other big projects, our building. So before I get started here, I want to thank your legal counsel and our legal counsel. They've been working on an agreement for our playfield, and I know you guys have all been discussing and talking about that for a few months, and so I just wanted to come and express my appreciation for coming to an agreement on the language and for the council approving it. I think it's a really good thing, the way we, the agreement that we came to, allowing us to move forward with the building, but also allowing playfields to be improved elsewhere to replace these. So thank you for that agreement. We brought it to our board last night. It was approved, so I think we signed off on it today, and you guys should see it shortly, so we should get it all executed very soon. But our plan is to move ahead with this and go to bid hopefully in June, and we're hoping for a good bid, a good contractor, and all those kinds of things, and hopefully we don't see any supply chain issues and the other things that have come up recently, but, yeah, so this is going to be, you know, there's the site plan, that orange rectangle in the top-left-hand corner is where our new building's going to be. And the existing building over on Freeway Drive, we're going to try and see if we can find some new tenants for that building while we move into the new one. It's going to be about a two-year project, since we're not out to bid yet, so we think in about two years from now, we'll be moved over.
So the blue building on the right-hand side is the existing building?
Correct.
Am I right? I'm just trying to orient myself.
Right at the very edge of that image is Freeway Drive.
Okay.
It's just cut off there.
Okay. Thank you.
And those three circles are infamous fountains.
Are they staying? The fountains are staying?
They'll stay. I don't know if they'll be in operation. They are a bear to maintain.
I know, I imagine, but they're so, I mean, hello, Vegas does it all the time. Can't you figure this out?
And they attract attention, unwanted attention.
I think they're pretty when you have the color, like red, white, and blue, you know, the Easter and all that good stuff.
That all looks great.
I like it.
It's the stuff that happens outside of regular business hours that isn't always great.
And the soap.
That hasn't happened in a while successfully, but yes, that happens. So those are the two big projects that has been in our capital program, and I'll touch on just some smaller projects we've been working on before our closeout. There are some projects that we are working on within the City of Mount Vernon that I just wanted to touch on. This is a joint project with a lot of different agencies, but the Laventer-Hogan-Martin intersection. That is a tough project there, as you all know. So we went in over the last four weeks, I think, and relocated some of our water lines. I think Cascade Natural Gas is going in next, and then there's the intersection improvements that are going to be done. But our work is finished. It was a really challenging project with all the traffic that goes by there, but I think the collaboration between all the agencies has gone really well, and it's nice that we could get in there early to move all of our stuff, and then now the rest of the improvements can take place. Something to look forward to, so this is connected to the transmission line project, and as I was saying, this wetland is where we're doing our directional drill, but after we finish that, we're going to finish the last piece of this on the west end, and we have to cross College Way to connect to our pipeline. It's right in the parking lot of that church that's there. So we're hoping to do that this summer, and I believe the contractor said he's going to open-cut College Way. I think that's the way the permit is written, so that's going to provide some more traffic challenges for that project as well, but you'll see, it won't be our crews doing this, it'll be our contractor, Scarsella, but that is coming this year as well. Our crews are hoping to get to a project in West Mount Vernon to do a lot of pipeline replacement there. So the yellow lines are some planned pipeline replacements in West Mount Vernon. The pipe is old, it's asbestos cement pipe, small diameter, and just due for an upgrade. So things to look forward to within the city. And that's all I have to share, unless there's any questions, comments.
Questions for George? All right. Oh, go ahead.
I might as well just mention and thank you all for all the work you do. Every time I travel somewhere else and get a taste of their water, it reminds me just how lucky we are in Skagit, and I know you guys have been winning some awards on that, so, and thanks for being a good steward of Skagit River and the Coltus Mountains and all the stuff you guys do. Thank you.
We appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our families, we see many family, they buy water, because we are one of the first places. We have a very healthy water to drink, and that way we help the environment to not to spend too much plastic and having good water here. Yeah.
And the water coming out of your tap is a lot cheaper than you can buy out of a bottle.
Yeah.
And it tastes better.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, George, for, we spent a lot of hours together getting to agreements on the fields, but we did, and so thank you for all that time and effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll move on to some business now. So item B is a closed-record public hearing, an approval of resolution. This is expansion of a non-conforming structure. The plan number is Plan 23-0543, and Mary Ann Manville Ailes from our Development Services Department is here for this particular item. I'll get the slides going. There we go.
Good evening, council, mayor. We have another one of these little special permissions tonight, and this one is, as mayor said, Planning 220543, and it's for a garage addition, and it is located at 1609 South Third Street. And the applicant is seeking approval to add 480 square feet to an existing garage, and the addition will comply with all the required setbacks. The garage is non-conforming because it doesn't comply with the required side setbacks on the north and with the rear setbacks on the west. I can't see that under that, but the project will be required to remove two unpermitted lean-tos that are attached to it, and the total size of the structure, the garage when it's completed, will be 801 square feet. And here's a picture, you can see the cloud here is, this is the building that is going to have the addition on. It's going to be right here in the front, and the lean-to here and the lean-to back here are the ones that are going to be removed. And just for your information, the one that's back here encroaches onto the neighbor's property. That's part of the problem. And then this is all attached with this house over here. So the staff recommends that the council follows the hearing examiner recommendation and adopt the accompanying resolution to provide the alteration of the non-conforming structure and allow the 480-square-foot addition to the garage and removal of the unpermitted lean-tos.
This also requires a closed-record public hearing. Any questions for Mary Ann before we open the hearing? Okay. We'll open the closed-record public hearing regarding Plan 22-0543. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the closed-record public hearing. This would be Resolution 1033, if council would like to take action tonight.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 1033.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mary Ann, a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you.
Great, and I just wanted to let you know, give you a quick update. We are, we did talk about the fact that we're going to come to you with an update to the code, so that you won't be seeing all of these little, the little mini ones, and so those will be done administratively. But I did want to ask if there is a desire on the council for us to move all of these to the hearing examiner, or if you still would like to continue to see the larger ones. And to let you know, it's been years and years since we've had a larger one, so they're few and far between.
That might be something to get detailed.
Something you guys just might want to think about, and let us, and if you can let us know on that, then when we do this update, if it is something that you would rather have the hearing examiner hear, and we can include that in there, so we don't have to do it twice.
Good. We'll talk about that in committee.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. Item C tonight is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2023 to 2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program amendments. And so Chris Phillips is our Public Works Director. He's joining us online tonight, so we're going to try this. I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So, Peter, thank you so much for helping me out here with the slides. So staff has recommended the city council approve a proposal, a proposed resolution adopting the 2023-2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. State law requires, RCW 3577.010, requires that each year, a city adopt a six-year transportation improvement plan or program, and this is an amendment to that six-year process. So just in a few weeks, we will be coming back to you in the May timeframe to discuss it in committee, and then we'll be back there talking about the 2024 through 2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. If you can go to the next slide. So this evening specifically, we're here to talk about those items that are basically in the gold type or light yellow, so they're dealing with the EV charging facility, bicycle charging, the Blackburn Road Extension, 13th and Broad Street, Caution Trail, phased upgrades or lighting upgrades, a realignment for Sixth and Division, and if you could, the next slide. Again, these are the projects that I have just discussed. Next slide. So to get into a little bit more as far as the EV charging facility, again, Mount Vernon Library Commons Project located between Second and Third Street. Construction should be completed here late 2023, early '24. What we're looking for here is, again, the 72 EV charging station for fast 68 Level 2s. Again, the program meets a variety of carbon reduction program goals, servicing regional EV charging requirements, and then also the park and ride support over at Skagit Station. Next slide. It would be the EV charging bicycle facility. Again, the blue arrow annotates these encasements for EV bikes. Here, we're looking for, again, a cost estimate of about $100,000. Again, the blue arrow annotates these encasements for EV bikes. Here, we're looking for, again, a cost estimate of about $167,000. This would be for nine EV charging stations and four fast charging spaces. Next is a signal upgrade.
I just wanted to make sure council knew that. These particular things are added to this amendment on purpose so that they fall in line for funding cycles that we're applying for currently with Skagit Council of Governments. So it's just, it's portions of that, the total commons project, just making sure everyone knew that's why we were doing this. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
At the very end.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, that's okay. So as the mayor said, how about if we go back a slide, Peter? Thank you so much. So for the EV charging and also the bicycle here, it's a total of somewhere close to about $2.8 million that we're looking for. This will allow us to compete with, for SCOG, for those funds that are available there. They'll be putting packages together and then it'll go through the adjudication process, if you will, with SCOG of which the mayor, again, is the chairperson for. Next slide. Then we have a signal upgrade here for 13th and Broad. Again, we're looking at, this is being a 2025-26 timeframe. Again, estimated cost of about $820,000. This would be a new signalized section. This is part of the mitigation for increased service for the property that the hospital is developing on 13th Street. We've had the developer already basically set the table, if you will, with a few hundred thousand dollars to prime this particular intersection. The intersection at the current time is not below level of service, but it will be in the future. So this again allows us to have that seed money as a match if there's any type of grants that we can, again, ascertain from SCOG. And this is not in competition with those EV charging projects that I just mentioned earlier. What we'll do here is retrofit all the curb ramps that you can see in the picture on the top there for ADA ramps and then also rehabilitate all the pavement that is associated with this particular intersection. Next slide, thank you so much, sir. Sixth and Division Street realignment, we had some conversation about this during our Public Works Committee meeting. Again, it's, as you're heading west, if you look at the first car that's just turning where the little white vehicle is there, it's that hairpin turn there that we're really concerned about. We wanna relax that particular corner, we wanna improve sidewalks and also rehabilitate the pavement in this area. Again, during heavy rain, snow events, this can either be a very fluid area. If you will, with the rainy weather, it becomes very slick. When we have icing incidents, you have a similar situation there where melts during the day, freezes at night, and we wanna address that. And again, cost estimates here are about $400,000. Thank you, Peter. Now we have three phases of the Colson Trail Safety Lighting. There's a Phase 2, 3, and 4. We've completed Phase 1 last year. And these areas here, we're looking to install new streetlights on the trail, add a secure cam, or add security cameras. So we're working there with our IS department, with Mary, our find director there at a variety of locations along the trail. And then also do some trail repairs as required. So the next three slides, we'll be discussing those. So we have Phase 2, Phase 3, and also Phase 4. Phase 3, just by way, is going to be the first area that we do just because of the proximity closer to Laventre Middle School. We wanna make sure that we enhance that first and then we'll be going to the other two. But again, these projects have played very well at SCOG and they are not in competition, as I mentioned earlier, with those projects that we were looking for for the EV charging. Again, just to recap for that project list, and of course, our last slide is if the council has any questions. Just prior to that, I just wanna thank Councilmember Brock Smith shot me an email earlier this week that we'll be updating for our 2024-2029 plan, which in the original map that we provided on 18th and Blackburn, you will notice that that is the discussion item, but the actual circle is located at 15th and Blackburn. So we will definitely be correcting that prior to our 2024-2029 discussion on the 10th.
Right. Questions, questions for Chris on this particular item? Okay.
I have some questions, but I'm happy to wait until.
Any other questions for Chris?
All right, we'll open our public hearing regarding the approval of the resolution for the 2023 to 2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program tip amendment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close our public here, public hearing. Go ahead, Richard.
So a few items. I'd like to start with something we discussed recently, the 13th Street and Broad Street signal. And I really appreciate how staff is developing the TIP to be kind of a repository for multiple sources. And I think as Director Phillips said, I have a few hundred thousand dollars to pre-capitalize this project to deal with future, you know, growth. So it's a great tool, great approach. I've talked with a few of my neighbors, I live in the, on the street in the area. And I think we realize that in the mornings, it's pretty busy, it's hard to turn. So I can appreciate that the status closed, not fantastic. And will probably get worse over time. But a couple of things, it's a big change in a, you know, a residential area that we really like the way it is in many ways. And I can't speak for everybody, but a few folks I've talked to so far. And I really would like to make sure that we've had a robust alternatives analysis that we, you know, landed on the right approach that's gonna balance convenience and inconveniences of folks in the neighborhood and that we've got the right technology. And then that we've communicated all of that work, that homework, to people in the neighborhood. So I'm not asking for any adjustments, not suggesting adjustments to the TIP as proposed. Though I would ask maybe the mayor and the director and my peers on the council if that's a reasonable request to kind of, you know, do that alternatives analysis. If we haven't done it thoroughly already, you know, finish that up. I'm sure there's a lot of work already in place. But just document that and share that with the community as we move ahead in the next couple of years.
I'm sure Public Works would be happy to attend a neighborhood meeting if it's something that you would like to put together to share how projects are designed and approached. I would be happy to do that if you'd like.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor, happy to support, and I believe at the Public Works Committee meeting, we did discuss the fact that prior to any recommendations that we would go and do, that we have done a thorough modeling of that with our consultant, our traffic consultant, like we would do for any commercial or residential project that goes into the city through that modeling. And then also taking a look at a variety of levels of service. And when that level of service breaks, you know, what is it that is responsible to go in there? That has been completed, more than happy to share, more than happy to go to a local meeting to discuss how we got to that decision. I believe Bill, our traffic engineer, shared at the Public Works Committee meeting the fact that some of the alternatives that the builder and our traffic safety, or I'm sorry, our traffic modeling firm, TSI, took a look at was C-curb and a variety of other things to put in the streets which are not very conducive to keeping a, what I would say, a pleasant environment for the community versus what the projected solution would be, which would be a light.
Work on community engagement there.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Richard.
So next one I'd like to just bring up is the Skagit River Pedestrian Bridge. So for folks watching, you know, there've been various iterations of conversations about how to expand economic development tourism and pedestrian access across the Skagit River. The current iteration on the TIP, T1702, is envisioned as a kind of a standalone bridge down near the existing library or lower in the river than the current Division Street Bridge. But it's expensive, there's no solid plans, it's kind of a concept, right? And we keep it on the TIP because it is a concept and we wanna have it there. It's projected out at 2028. We've had several recent conversations about the Washington State Department of Transportation's work on the Division Street Bridge, that they have, you know, several million dollars to do a painting and maintenance of the bridge. And staff and mayor and the council have been talking to DOT about that project. They're gonna be required to look at how to meet the complete streets requirement for all transportation projects. That means how do you pass bicycles and pedestrians more safely than currently is happening at the Division Street Bridge? And so I guess I'm wondering, we've talked about in the past if we put a more prominent role for, more prominent priority, let's say, on the planning for and design of potential partner opportunities with WashDOT, that that would not be a good thing. So I've talked with some of the other council members about this and wondered if, and maybe this is something we can do in the next iteration, Director Phillips. But it seems like it would be great to put more emphasis on that earlier so that we have a better opportunity to partner with WashDOT and show them that we have the right of way along the bridge and we have interest in partnering with them from a financial standpoint to, you know, get people across the river more safely sooner. So I'm wondering if that could be expedited in some way ahead of 2028.
I'll go ahead and answer for Chris. This is a WashDOT-driven project and we can only meet with them when they are ready to meet. They have the mandate by law to consider complete streets as used described. That is not anywhere near off the table, that is part of its agenda. WashDOT is severely understaffed with engineers, and I think we've talked about this before. They've made it very clear that when they're ready to meet, they will reach out. They're required to do public process, they're required to do all of that planning. But the city, I think we have been pleasantly and professionally persistent as much as we can, but we are literally beholden to when they're able to sit down to talk. So that's where we are right now with them. They know the importance of this project, we've been advocating for it for 12 years. They were thrilled to be able to advocate on the state level to get the funding to do the project. But now they have other priorities that they've gotta do design and engineering for. So we really do just have to be professionally respectful and wait until they're ready to sit down. That's about the best answer I can give.
On those comments, brought the idea to my head that, I mean, wouldn't it make sense to put more meat to it on the TIP for that particular item so that whenever DOT is ready, we already have something documented of showing, hey, you know what? We're planning, it's not only on the list, but it's also allocating or with the potential of putting some dollars behind it. Would that help the process?
No, they're very aware of the commitment of the city and wanting to partner and make a solution that would be the most efficient, effectively for the city government. They're very much aware with that. The idea that design, we've been told the design would take more than a year to conduct. So there's lots of time for a design to take place, a cost estimate to say, all right, we either can cover everything with what we already have, right? WashDOT's funding, or we're going to be short. It will allow a lot of time for the city to go out and find potentially some pedestrian transportation alternatives grant funding. It just doesn't happen as quick, I think, as maybe we would like to. But it absolutely gives us the solid partnership to get what we all want out of the project. There's time for that, if, I guess, would be the short answer. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So like, for instance, if we were to sit down even tomorrow, right? They would plan out scoping schedules, public meetings, how do we do all this type of stuff? That would go into efforts for what we would get to 30% design and that's when you get your cost estimates. That takes seven, eight months. So by next year, we would know, okay, here's kind of what we're looking at, 30% design. Can what is already allocated cover? Or they would say, hey, city, how do you wanna participate? And then that gives us in that grant cycle funding to look for the money through, say, SCOG is the easiest way. That's what we would do. Or to look for state legislature grant cycles. So there's plenty of time. Hopefully that answers some questions.
We were told that WashDOT says that with the existing funding for the Division Street Bridge, they can only work in their existing right of way. My understanding.
Legally, it can only exist in their existing right of way. But if we, they do design in partnership, then that identifies who needs to do what to add to the project, so.
Okay, so that's a little different than what we talked about, but that's good news, if that's true. I guess where I'm going with this is it seems like it's a big priority of our city to get this done. And if we have it more quickly on our TIP and if we're there in case they need additional assistance to work outside of the right of way and do whatever designs are necessary so that we can partner with them on the project. So I'm not sure how it affects the TIP, I think it's just a discussion I wanted to have. I appreciate the input. I know we've all asked to sort of keep pressure up on DOT and keep working with them, so I was just wondering if there was another vehicle here.
I'm not, I'm not sure about if what I say is true as an appropriate comment. These projects, as DOT, has jurisdiction, of course, within their right of way. When projects are identified and designed and other right of way is needed from either the city, the Dyke District, or private property, and those are identified as a whole project scale, that's as it becomes a viable project. So.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that incorrectly, but Director Phillips told us that this money that DOT has can only be used in their existing right of way. So I don't, I don't know which one of those is right, and that's not really the point. The point is, can we use the TIP as a vehicle to show that it's an important project to us and we're ready to commit resources to make sure that DOT is gonna help us as much as possible meet our needs.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is there, there is a way for us to amend our TIP after adopted? If such an option came forward to us and we were able to do something, so.
That's what we're doing tonight.
I mean, but I mean, we could do it again, is what I'm saying. If something happened and we had something that we could do with the pedestrian bridge, because we're all very much supportive of the pedestrian bridge, that's not even a question. So what I'm saying is that if the opportunity occurred, then we could come back again and reamend.
You can, however, if it's on the TIP within the six-year plan, it's all eligible.
It's all there, so we can just shift things around. Okay, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was understanding that correctly.
Is there enough flexibility that if it identifies a standalone pedestrian bridge for 14 million, that the rest of this could fit in there, that different concepts would fit in?
I'm not sure we'd come up with the 14 million.
The bridge project is not the city's, it's not on our planning. So I'm not sure where you're going with that, I wasn't, I'm not sure. Your question, so.
It's a question of resolution. This is currently conceived and described in the TIP as an independent pedestrian bridge downstream for 14.4 million dollars. And what we're And um, what we're wondering with D O T is if, if they can uh, partner with us to get something done. That would meet the need for much cheaper because our consultants through the parks process have said, and I don't know. You know, the details of this, but that uh, state and federal grants are not um, likely to be available for a standalone bridge. So we'll have uh, more success, I would, I would assume we'd have a more higher likelihood of success, um. Partnering with D O T and working for a bridge along D O T's right of way. So the, but the question is that this project describes a standalone bridge, not a pedestrian bridge. Along the Division Street Bridge. Or some other solid engineering solution.
Okay, I think I would say that adopting this does not preclude us from partnering. Or from reclassifying a project in order to collaborate with Wash Dot. At any time, it would be a amendment, just like we're doing tonight. Chris, correct me if I was wrong on that.
Right, any other questions about this? Go ahead.
One more, I promise. Uh, Blackburn Road Extension, so this is a, a new, so let me step back. It's actually a long uh, time envisioned project to connect up to Eaglemont. And was back in the P U D, signed apparently in the nineties. And is in our comprehensive plan and this year, there's an amendment proposed to add it into our T I P. The uh, I guess uh, currently we have uh, uh. P U D, a planned unit development, um. Agreement with the landowners up at Eaglemont that would require that if they're going to do additional housing development. That they would need to um, fund this road before they could get vested with those development rights. Sound right so far?
A portion, they'd be on, required to do a portion, I guess, would be more accurate.
That's fair. Um, so uh, I, I get, I'm wondering, um. What the, so I, I'm looking for an assessment of. What the uh, benefits are of this road for uh, residential development. Um, i- in addition to the transportation benefits that would be provided. Um, be, it feels like we've put a proposal forward. Um, where we're not uh, highly certain what sorts of housing might be leveraged. Um, with this project and that was um, you know, what was discussed as the rationale for this being on. Proposed to go into the T I P?
Uh, if I, if I may, it's already on the T I P. All we did was move it from down at the bottom of it and moved it up.
Right underneath the last funded project, just again for record.
And the, the dollar numbers didn't change, that, that's, that's something.
Nothing, nothing as I am aware of has changed in that. It was, it's an unfunded mandate, it's aspirational, it's there, um, and. Happened to move it up in the bottom, that was just, to be honest, a little bit of administrivia, but on the other hand. I know there were conversations of uh, you know, what is the possibility of um. Taking a look at future development in that area and. We, we had moved it up to.
I think adding to that too, the, the cost that's put in here is for uh, P E, which is.
Scoping, engineering, surveying, getting the work done to get to a point. Uh, again, the third, at thirty percent design that we discussed about the um, the, the pedestrian bridge. Um, there's lots of conversation we can have anecdotally about the um, significant housing that would be opened up on. Blackburn, Iris Meadows has been a previous P U D that has been in for uh, pre-applications. Um, several different iterations, the uh, Hidden Lakes area before it was purchased to be logged. Um, had been in a previous uh, potential P U D planning there for hundreds of units and things like that. So we can anecdotally provide counsel with what had been um, on the table prior. Uh, but it would be hundreds of housing units that could be opened up if the city. Uh, invested in at least. Uh, preliminary engineering of this type of a project. Um, the Development Services Department would be happy to give a briefing in committee. Of what those former proposed developments are and the numbers of units at the time, mostly single-family units. But as you know, there is a push for um, multifamily and more dense development, which council has passed ordinances and able to. Um, realize and the idea that a city would invest in the infrastructure in order to realize. Housing units, I think, is something that should be moved forward, which is why it's been proposed on this amendment.
Right, um, and the type of housing units are really important, um, we're investing in infrastructure. Um, I'd like to see that for um, more multifamily and more urban core development. So if we make this amendment, does it um, provide authority for uh, city staff to start pursuing these grants now? Or does that have to wait until we approve a budget for twenty twenty four?
They would start uh, seeing if things line up. There are a lot of other priorities and there's limited percentages of funding and transportation funding that goes to uh, P E work. There's the construction pots of money, there's the P E pots of money, this would just allow staff to be able to say, okay, if an opportunity comes up. We put in for it. Doesn't mean you'll get it.
Well, since, um, since we're having an open discussion about it, um. I, I, I guess I, I mean, the one thing I would voice is that the, the one thing that's sort of like a. And I understand how the process is going, you know, kind of having the T I P, your wish list into the future, uh, you're in planning for it, um. But I mean, with this particular item here, um, comes down to the, to the housing portion, right? It's an extension of a road or development of a new road from one side to the other, Blackburn onto Eaglemont, right? And uh, the concern that comes from there is just the, I guess, the type of housing that would potentially go there and um. I mean, I'm not very smart, but I would suggest or predict maybe that it wouldn't be, you know, like housing that um. That would be more common, like, you know, I, I would expect Stanford Drive wouldn't be up there. I mean, just the, the general look of the neighborhoods are vastly different. So like for homes that are in the Eaglemont area, they're, I don't know. Eight hundred, seven hundred K north of that, um, in terms of like the, the price that they would go for. So just my, my caution to, to that. I, I would say I just voicing that and putting it on the table, uh, but I would say also that. Um, development of a city and still opening the door for more housing is still wise. But just putting that caution out there as well.
That's it.
I'm gonna make a motion that council approve the proposed twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight T I P amendment resolution.
Second.
Great, uh, motion by Melissa and a second by Gary. Alright, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, alright, um, item D tonight is, I'm on the right one, right? The approval of an agreement with an amendment for H K P Architects, P L L C, Chris Phillips is going to present this as well, Chris.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, uh, city staff recommends city council authorize the mayor to amend the H K B, uh, H K P.
Commons contract in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. City staff has reviewed and briefed the mayor on the following additional services associated with. The Mount Vernon Library Commons Project to include Design Review Board, uh, Light Design, N I P A Compliance, uh, Water Quality. Utility Relocation, P S E or with P S E and our uh, good partners over at P U D. Uh, Buy America and F H W A requirements and Blower Door Testing. Uh, and lastly, there is the Passive House uh, dealing with Argon gas replacement due to the uh, ongoing conflict in Ukraine. Uh, the total cost of the contract uh, amendment is, I mentioned, one forty-eight, three, three, eight. Uh, city staff recommends the city council authorize the mayor to amend the H K P's contract in the, in that amount, pending your questions.
Questions for Chris on this?
Alright, what's your pleasure?
Authorize the mayor to exec, execute a contract amendment with H K P Architects. Second.
Motion by Gary, second to one, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, alright, item E is the approval of an agreement amendment with TranTech Engineering. Again, Chris Phillips is here for this, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, am I uh, too loud, I forgot to ask that last time.
It's, it's a little loud, but we should be able to test you in here.
Okay, I'm not, on my end, I'll just let you know, having sat in the cheap seats, I'm, I'm trying to talk very um, lightly or not loud. Okay, I'm just really energized, uh. Uh, so TranTech Engineering was selected to provide design and engineering services to uh, develop plans and specifications for the twenty twenty-two. Street Improvement Program, which includes curb ramp improvement uh, phase as well as a pavement uh, restoration phase. Um, and these portions of street are annotated in the attachment they are dealing or cons- cons- uh. Working with the streets located at North Eighteenth Street, East Division, Anderson Road, Fox Lane, North Thirty-Fifth Street. And North Thirty-Fifth Place. Uh, there was one note uh, last year that Public Works made the decision to delay. Construction of the twenty twenty-two Street Improvement Program to take advantage of more favorable bidding prices in twenty-three. And the bid for the project as a twenty-three paving program and the curb ramp. So uh, basically what we're looking for is to amend the contract uh, with TranTech uh, to provide um. Inspection and construction management services, uh, not to exceed eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and it's basically due to the fact that we have an engineering position uh, that is still vacant uh, down in our Public Works uh, Engineering Division. And uh, this will help us bridge that, uh, at this particular moment, we do not believe that we'll be using. One hundred percent of that eighteen thousand, eight ninety-two, but that is a worst-case scenario. And if we do not use it, then that will actually reduce the price of our con- uh, construction uh, price when we come back for our final briefing to. Um, council. Uh, we recommend a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TranTech Engineering to provide the additional services for bidding support. Construction support and inspection, not to exceed eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And this will uh, make the total uh, cost not to exceed two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Pending your questions.
Alright, questions for Chris on this item?
Hearing no questions, I'll make a motion that council authorize the mayor to enter into. The contract amendment with TranTech Engineering.
Second. Right, motion by Melissa and a second by Mary, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Chris, thank you so much for joining us on East Coast time.
Alright, thanks, Mayor.
Good night, Chris, alright.
Item F tonight is the approval of an ordinance, this is for the twenty twenty-three budget amendment, Doug, our finance director is here for this, Doug?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, uh, just a second, I turn up my turn, my hearing aids again now. So city staff is requesting council to approve an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget. Um, the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget includes two items. First is the Equipment Rental and Reserve Fund, um, requires an increase in appropriated expenditures in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the purchase of a commercial rear-load garbage truck for the solid waste utility. Uh, this truck is included in the E R and R replacement schedule to be replaced in two thousand and twenty-three. But was inadvertently not in, uh, included in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. The second item is also in the Equipment Rental and Reserve Fund and, and requires an increase in appropriation in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the down payment of a residential automated garbage truck for the solid waste utility. Um, this item is included to be replaced in the two thousand and twenty-six E R and R schedule. But since this specific piece of equipment has an unusually long construction timeline. Um, city staff recommend that cost, that uh, recommend this cost-effective build uh, request happen now. In order to save money, time and replace antiquated equipment in the effective man- uh, manner. Um, the estimated cost for the chassis build-out is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which may be built in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, more than likely, it will be in twenty-four though, and then um, an estimated total vehicle cost is four hundred and fifty thousand. Which the remainder again would also be included in the two thousand and twenty-four budget process. So as these increases in equipment expenditures in the E R and R um, fund were not included in the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget. These budget amendments are necessary to complete the, and properly record these activities. The uh, Equipment and Replacement Fund has available funding for these increases. So with that, city staff recommends the adoption of ordinance thirty-eight sixty-eight, amending the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget.
Alright, questions for Doug on this item?
Could move to approve ordinance thirty-eight sixty-eight?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Gary and a second by one, all those in favor, please say aye. Any uh, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you, alright, item G is the approval of an ordinance, this is chapter twelve, point two, three in City Parks. And our city attorney, Kevin Rogerson, will present this item, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, as the mayor stated, this is. Proposed ordinance thirty-eight sixty-nine, which amends chapter twelve thirty-two of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code, that's your chapter that talks about your parks. When we originally adopted twelve thirty-two to set out a fairly comprehensive scheme of the parks' rules, behaviors and regulations. That the city of Mount Vernon adopted, staff recommended that you created a position called the Parks Ranger Position. At that time, uh, the Parks Ranger was trained and educated through what's called a Parks Academy. It wasn't through the Criminal Justice Training Commission, however, we strongly felt that that training was sufficient for them to have. Law enforcement powers, but under state law, unless you go through the C J T C Basic Law Academy or they recognize that. The other training is an equivalent, uh, you can't get full commission powers and at that point, you were granting that position, what's called a special commission. That special commission granted them limited powers to enforce laws within the parks, thousand feet within the parks, and it was limited to misdemeanors. Good news is, since that time, the Criminal Justice Training Commission has recognized that such training is a functional equivalent. So long as they take an additional class that kind of fills the gaps. So this would allow us to recognize that and grant the park ranger who works and is embedded with law enforcement full commission powers. Just as any general authority peace officer has, so while they'll wear a different uniform, be called something different, they would have. Uh, the same equivalent powers as any one of your rank and file police.
Alright, questions for Kevin on this?
And our chief is here, and our, uh, yeah, Parks Department Director is here.
If you have any questions for them, I'm happy to ask them to come to the podium. Great, if not, this is our ordinance thirty-eight sixty-nine.
Could you move for approval of ordinance thirty-eight sixty-nine?
Second.
Thank you, motion by Mary and a second by Melissa, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, alright. Item H tonight is the approval of an agreement with Little Mountain, the Little Mountain House Lease Agreement. Jennifer Burner, Parks and Emergency Services Director is here for this item.
Good evening again, council, um, so the uh, rental property at Little Mountain is, their lease will be up June first. So um, that required us to take another look at um, our lease agreement. Um, upon review of the rental property at Little Mountain, staff is recommending um, that the rent for the Little Mountain House. Um, be increased four hundred dollars per month for the twenty, for going forward with twenty twenty-three. Um, the current rental rate is fifteen hundred a month and has remained the same since twenty nineteen. Uh, the adjusted monthly rental rate shall be at one thousand nine hundred dollars, taking effect June one in twenty twenty-three. This amount matches what we are currently charging for, which we raised the rent for at the Bonnie Ray House. Based on when we went through and did the um, we looked at what property rental rates for similar properties around the area. Um, we're charging, um, we took a look at that and then we compared that with what we did for the Bonnie Ray House. And so we feel like this is equitable rent, um, there is caretaker duties, um, just as at Bonnie Ray House. For this particular residence as well, um, they do um, a lot of the outside maintenance. Above and beyond what you would normally do.
Questions for Jennifer on this?
Yeah, um, thanks, appreciate the market rental analysis that went into this. Yeah, um thanks, appreciate the market rental analysis that went into this. Um but I I did think there were some similarities with the Bonnie Ray um lease as well. Uh but I'm trying to remember with the with the Bonnie Ray uh lease there, um the caretaker duties extended to the the. The property itself and the park, or?
No, just the property.
Just the property.
Yeah.
For Bonnie Ray?
For Bonnie Ray, we do all the other maintenance, they just, they mow, that's part of. An extension out into the um back behind, but we mow everything out in front.
Got it, okay, cause when I, when I read exhibit C, that you provided us the attachment. I I I read and akin to the realization that with the caretaker duties of doing the lawn. That's with many rental agreements, that's one of the things that sort of kind of goes hand in hand with the rest of the rental rate. Um for such a property, so I was wondering about that.
It's something that has been standard in the agreements um since I've started here, so I I don't know. It's just been something that they've always had in there. Um we do ask that like after storms and things like that, especially up at the um Mount Vernon. Um and at the Little Mountain House, that there's a lot of trees and limbs and all of that, and they clear all that out. Um and help with clearing of those uh road right out in front, but there isn't as much grass there, but there's a lot more trees there.
Where?
At the Little Mountain House.
Much more or much less?
Much more trees, at the Little Mountain House, that house sits in the middle of all those trees. Bonnie Ray, they're not responsible for any trees outside. There's hardly, they're on the, they're out on the perimeter, so they they don't have any responsibility for any of that. Where the folks at the Little Mountain House are dealing with more more of the tree issues there.
I like that, okay, uh when Bonnie Ray came up, I thought it it included the park itself, I think. Which is why I thought that was uh, or at least, you know, some part of the park, because the park itself is not that big. Um which I thought that made sense for the for the reduction in the rental rate that was given to them back then.
Yeah, no, we do all the mowing out in front, um they do the little bit back behind. That there's that a little field extension back behind the house at Bonnie Ray, and they do that, we provide them the mower to do that. Um and so that's, that is something that they do.
Yeah.
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, um part of the caretaker duties are simply that we have families in those homes. Um in an effort to keep down, I mean, if they were empty, obviously, there'd probably be some vandalism and things like that. So they just kind of keep an eye on the property. They do, um they're not required to open or close the park in any of those types of duties. But having them there, they are eyes and ears for us out there in those park settings. So we do hear from them um occasionally about any kind of park issues that are going on. Um that kind of help us maintain that park and just having somebody twenty-four seven in those facilities is very helpful.
We have power to authorize the mayor to increase the monthly rental rate for the Little Mountain rental property located at twenty-seven seventy-three Little Mountain Road. To nineteen hundred a month.
Thank you.
Motion by Mary, second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. No she carries, thank you. Alright, that completes our scheduled agenda items. I will ask our city attorney if there is a need for an executive session this evening.
No.
With that, we will be uh adjourned, I think I know the right word, adjourned at eight thirty-five.